We will now open up the meeting for Thursday, April 19th, 2018.
Gary Bowden.
Here.
Frank Fari.
Marshall Goff.
Here.
Ryan Kennedy.
Here.
Chad Segman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Malpejo.
Here.
Mayor Going.
Here.
This evening we have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Kennedy.
Let us pray. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and do the people's business, and thank you for helping us to have wisdom as we do it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have a special presentation by our mayor. Luke, can you talk to them up in their board members? The dumb and whammy.
Well, get her over there and have you say anything something.
Can you stand up?
Yeah, come on, come on. Here's this important thing. Nobody else. I don't hear it from toss right there.
All right.
There we go. Sorry that was glassy. I already was.
This is my phone.
What was it?
A proclamation. Whereas equal opportunity in housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans under Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and whereas the 50th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law provides an opportunity for all Americans to rededicate themselves to the principle of free choice and to reacquaint themselves with the rights and responsibilities that are theirs under the law, and whereas implementation of the fair housing policy of West Virginia requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each and every one of our citizens, and whereas the departments and agencies of the state of West Virginia provide leadership in an effort to make fair housing a right that can be realized by all of our citizens, and whereas the city of Clarksburg recognizes and supports the Clarksburg-Harrison Regional Housing Authority in its committed efforts to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and to promote equal housing opportunities for all. Now therefore I, Catherine A. Goings, Mayor of the City of Clarksburg, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Clarksburg, and encourage all citizens to support and endorse the practice and policy of fair housing in their personal lives as well as their workday duties, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Clarksburg to be affixed hereto this 19th day of April 2018 attested by Annette Wright, our city clerk. Congratulations. And if you would like to say a word or two?
Well, actually I will say a bunch of words.
If you want to just get up to the podium?
Just go and just.
Yeah, do your little presentation.
All right, we'll go from there. Well, it's good to see you all again. When I walked through the door, the first question was, "It's been a year?" I thought, "Now?" Yeah, I guess it is, it has been. So, for those of you that are new, each year I give an annual report. I usually do it in April with Fair Housing Month, and also I'll have the third item, which will be the pilot payment. But I've given you all a copy. I'll try to go through it as quickly as I can. I want to say to you, first of all, thank you very much for having me here. The first part of our programs, and they've grown over the years so much, but the first one that you'll see as you open up is our Public Housing Program, which consists of pupil towers, Mason House, and Laurel Lanes. Of those 323 units, we've had a utilization rate or lease-up of 99 percent, which is really excellent. HUD requires us to have 97. So, in that regard, we're very good. Now, we also have had a lot of income there from the federal government and rental income, about $1.5 million, $1.6 million. That goes through, channels through the city and the county, through local vendors and such. Our Learning Oasis Center is still going strong over at Laurel Lanes. We still have an after-school program, a tutoring program, and we do, we are still involved with the Lighthouse of Hope, with Ray and Tressis Shaw and Glenn Kornman, who have worked with us on Easter plays and Christmas plays, and then our resident coordinator, Donna DiMarco, also adds things from different health agencies, financial agency to help anyone there that's interested in trying to become a little more self-sufficient. So, we've been really pleased with that. Obviously, we all know, because you fund a portion of the back-to-school party with the backpacks that we fill them and get them ready, and that assists about 80, on average of about 80 children a year. So, it's very successful. Real pleased, and so our public housing program's really going pretty well. A couple pages past that, the capital fund, really what that is, HUD provides us with money to maintain and modernize the buildings. I don't know if you've been to any of the three lately, but they look good for as old as they are. I mean, they came in the 70s and maybe broke ground on a couple of them in the 60s. So, the federal government provided us with about $408,000, and every year we do stair-step, you know, projects that keep it safe, sanitary, decent, and also modernized enough to where we don't run into any problems. I'll explain to you how we're viewed with this. I'm not just saying that it's going well, but when I get to the end, I'll explain to you how the grading system is from the federal government. Another big program we have is you're aware is the voucher program through Section 8. That money was about 200, or 2.5 million that was chammed in, and that's through independent landlords, and about 212 participated throughout the city and the county, and the families we assisted were close to 700. And our lease-up rate was 94 percent. That, to explain why it's not 99 or 100, they changed the rules a few years ago, so HUD gives you a bunch of money. Well, not as much as it should, but they give us a bunch of money, and they say, "Spend it all." Well, we have designated vouchers, but the money never equals the amount of designated vouchers. We have six, what do we have now, six?
Six twenty-six.
Six twenty-six. So, we got 94 percent of them, and then we ran out of money. So, we spent all of the money, and that's what they want, either all your vouchers issued or all the money spent, which we've done that. Through that program, we have a self-sufficiency program that allows families to participate in with the jobs that they have. Some of the rent money is saved, as designed by HUD, so then when they graduate in five years through their independent action plan, then they're allowed to take some of that money and then move on for a down payment of a house or whatever. We've had some over the years graduate, and the ones that don't have to forfeit whatever money that we had saved for them, it goes back in the program. But that's been, that's been successful. Our permanent supportive housing program, now that's the one that we undertook about four or five years ago that a lot of people and a lot of agencies didn't want to do because it's a tough one. It's for the chronically homeless. They have a little different issues than the regular voucher holders. They run into things like alcoholism, or they've been on the street and they're homeless, and they may have a little more medically challenged problems. What we do is we work through the Summit Center, even, and we have another, too, with the Veterans and Associate Administration, and so what happens is, the big picture of the thought process on these particular grants, which we received about $410,000, is that if we take a homeless person and we get him in there, and say the rent's $400 a month, say it's $500 a month, let's say we pay all of it or most of it. Well, they're not cold in the winter, they're not on the street, and let's say they go to, and they do go to the emergency room three, four times a month, and sometimes just to get warm, well, you're looking at $800, $900 a visit. So, the federal government's looking like, "Wait a minute, we have $500 a month up against $3,200 a month." So then it tries to help as a whole, and really we've been very successful with that because we are leased up, and I want to digress a minute and say that everybody, including our city manager, has a detail person. So, when you can't remember all the numbers, or there's so many, I always refer to Ron DeLindsay, who's my detail person. So, what, we have 40?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. And then we just received, did we receive?
Funding for a second case manager.
Yeah, because they couldn't believe we were able to do this with one case manager because they said it's too many, because they take a lot of extra care. So, we're pleased that that was a big sticking point, the homeless coalition, and the state was really pleased that we undertook this because it helps a lot of people in Harrison County. Next, on our homeownership grant, I don't have anything to report there because we sold all the homes again, which was great, and now nothing been foreclosed on. So, what we continue to do, which was started in the county, I think Lou, you remember that because you were heavily involved years ago, pre-merger, and so we still look for homes to buy, rehabilitate, but they have to fit, not necessarily where we make a profit, because we can't lose money. So, that's a little bit of the needle in the haystack, but we still have that program open and available. The other one we have is the Veterans Affair Supportive Housing, which is the VAS, and that's strictly for veterans, and we have 40 there. We were just awarded five extra, and so we're helping, you know, veterans get housing assistance. So, that's really all I have in the summary, and in the summary part I want to say, and then I have a couple other things because, you know, I just do, but the thing is, is that even though the housing isn't a big sexy item, it becomes very sexy when nobody has any place to live. So, what I want to say to you is consistently, I come here every year because our board, and you know all of them, of course Lou's here, and my staff, who deserve a ton of credit, they have the same affinity for the people that we help, they want to do it the right way, and so therefore we are viewed every year by HUD, and every year I've been here for the last 10 years, actually the last 16, 10 years, well, since the merger. Every year, they, the Public Housing Program is graded by what is called a FaaS score, which is the Public Housing Assessment System, and we've been designated a high performer every single year for the last 16 years. Actually, no, it's 15 years. One year we were standard, I appealed it, and we won. So, it's been 16 years. So, what I'm saying to you is that they review your management, your buildings, how you handle your residence, and your financial information to make sure that you're just not spending all the money and not doing what you need to do. So, that's a high performer designation. The Section 8 program, they have the same thing, only they call it C-MAP, and what they do is they come in and make sure that you inspect the right way, that your landlords are participating properly, that all your paperwork's in order, your financials are done, you're running right, high performer as well, and that has been 16 years we've been without them. So, I can say to you that, again, all of this for this year, it's almost $4.8 million that money has been generated and come in from the federal government. It's not state, it's federal funds, and we've been very pleased, I'm really proud of the latitude that my board gives me, but not enough latitude to where sometimes I have to sit there for two and a half hours and answer questions. But, you know, they're very committed, my staff's very committed, I don't want to do, I don't want to do without them. I want to add a couple other things real quick. One, as you're all aware about the Palace Building, as the developers put that together, and most or all of you would know this, but I wanted to say it anyway, we are heavily involved. We did the environmental, the subsidy layering review, so once that was approved, and we had to designate the project-based vouchers. If we didn't do that, probably wouldn't have worked. I'm not saying it wasn't a team effort, it was a huge team effort, but we were able to participate and get this to fruition to a point where now when it's finished, then we will manage it. And what I'm saying to you about managing it is that should, maybe I lay some concerns from anybody in the community, it's like, "Who's going to be in there, who's going to want?" Well, we're not absentee landlords, and what I'm telling you is fact, I mean, I just didn't make all this up on how we operate. So, we will pay close attention, we will do the process the way we're supposed to, and hopefully in the future we'll do more projects because all I have to do is benefit the city and the county. Now, I want to stop there, and then let me do one more little thing, and then if you have questions. Aside from the housing authority, did I miss anything? Okay. Aside from the housing authority, we created the nonprofit Mount Opportunities Corporation, which a number of you came to Monticello when we finished that particular project. We've had five homeownership units, and we sold them all, and everybody's doing well, and now we have 16 rental units, and they're all filled, and we continue to look to try to obtain grant funds and build more rental units, and what we've done there is, I don't know, almost, almost between four and five million in grant funds. So, we're going to continue to try to get grant funds to do that, and the reason for the nonprofit creation was sometimes housing authorities can't jump in the same pool of money as everybody else because we're federally funded in certain areas. So, that's why we created this and activated, and that's been very, very successful. And I know that from the other day, you guys were there, I mean, they're nice.
They're very nice.
They're nice, and they're very affordable, and we've had good contractors do all, you know, every one that we've done. So, that, believe it or not, I'm done. That's it. So, if you have any questions, I'd gladly answer any that you have.
I just want to commend the job that you do. I work with in the United Summit Center, and I go to the housing, the homeless meetings for the veterans and the non-veterans. I work with Stephanie Sumpther, great, great person. She does, gives her heart and soul, you know, with working with the individuals.
Yes, she does.
Especially, a lot of success with the veterans and us is seeing if you've had any success. I know someone from the mission is attending the meetings for the veterans, but I was wondering if you've had any success maybe getting more of a presence from the mission for the non-veteran side for housing.
You know, I'm not sure, I mean, Chris, does Chris have a designated, other than Chris Moll, does he designate, designate him on the council?
I know that Stephanie goes down, she's down there every single week.
Yeah, she goes down a lot. That's all I mean.
She goes down every week to work with them to try to make sure no one down there misses, but we don't actually have someone coming to the meetings right now. They have often on over the last four years had someone, but I think with changes in staff and whatever, they, you know, we don't have someone right now.
We'll talk to Chris and see what he can do and get some more involvement. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it'd be nice if it gets all of us on board at the same time.
Yeah.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Lou, I know you mentioned about the Palace Building. I knew that the authority was involved, but not to the extent until you explained it tonight, so that's going to help me relay information to people in the community because, you know, all they know is the SAD brothers are building an affordable housing for seniors. So now, you know, that gives us a little extra tool to say, "Well, they're the developer, but here's who's going to manage this."
Well, this project especially took a while because there were some historic credits and there was all that, and I can honestly say that the SAD brothers, us, and Martin, and some of my board managers, Lou was one of them, I mean, we've all been in close contact, you know, worked through all these, I mean, we had some concerns with parking, made sure that we had enough there. So, we've all really been pretty close knit and all that, and really that's how projects come to fruition.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, one person can't put on her back and go. You've got to have people to chip in and help.
Well, thank you to your staff.
Oh, well, hey, it's just another avenue that we can jump in and do something. We're glad to do it.
Thank you.
Lou.
Yes.
How does Section 8, as you worded in this standardized city and county housing stock? Is it that they have a specific criteria they all have to abide by in order to be a part of the program? The landlord.
The landlord, okay. Yeah, well, it's really basically called housing quality standards. They all, they all have to abide by a certain checklist, a certain inspection list. Some landlords think we're a little too rough on them, and some of them go, "Well, that's not a big deal at all." But this is what I tell tenants, and this is what I tell landlords, and sometimes I get a funny look. This is all voluntary. If you want to participate, that's fine. You know, when you go, and I'll be more specific, but when you go to a ballgame and they tell you the ticket price is $8, you pay the $8, you don't go to the game. Well, we have a specific set of rules, and we have what we call rent reasonableness, so it's not like I'm going to give Martin $10, I'm only going to give you $5. I mean, it's based on what, you know, the unit is, bedroom size, how many people are going to be in the unit, and the landlords specifically have to follow that. What we do briefly is we go out, we do the inspection, but when we do the inspection, we have to have the agreement on the rent with the rent reasonableness, correct?
Correct.
And so what happens is once that's agreed on, we go out. We go there, we look, the inspector comes back, and the R Inspector is Rich Johnson, and he's wonderful. And so he makes a maintenance list, and he sends it to landlord, and he says, "30 days, you fix this," and the landlord either repairs or finishes, and then we can go ahead and enter contracts. And if he says, "I don't want to do it," well, then the tenant, or the applicant, or the participant, then look somewhere else. But yeah, they have to do that, and we've worked with Mr. Lenisa and Adam on the registry part of it, so we're trying to make sure that we get in and every unit is safe, sanitary, decent, I'm using HUD language, but let me say this to you because I just, it's not a disclaimer, but if we go to your unit, in case anybody else, if we go to your unit and we go in and it passes, and let's say six months from now someone calls the city or something, says, "Oh, there's garbage everywhere, there's not..." Well, we're only required to go back in about 11 months, so if some, if one of our units, and it's rare, it goes bad, well, if no one calls Hudson Tell, we don't know. But if the neighbor would say, "Oh, I'm going to call the housing authority," then we immediately go out and we address it, and either the landlord takes care of what he didn't do that would happen to break, maybe it was the tenant's fault, or we tell the tenant that they have to get in line with what they're doing, or we terminate assistance. That's where it comes in about how we manage. It won't go a long, long time. I've had a lot of, a lot of people call me and be concerned about, you know, "Is that a HUD unit?" "Oh, yes, it's a HUD unit."
How would a neighbor necessarily know that or report it to you?
Because, well, how would they know? Maybe they wouldn't, but if they call the city, I mean, if they don't wait seven months, if they call the city, I can assure you that Martin or somebody would call me and say, "Hey," you know, because they would know, I mean, once they got out there, I guess. But the thing is, is that we address it, and a lot of people think just because if it's run down or if it's, no, 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 it's not that way, they never pass. But if something happens in the meantime, it's not our fault, we don't know, but we certainly would address it if we did know. So, I can say we've had, you know, very good luck with our, a lot of our tenants are elderly, disabled, they work, but they don't make quite enough money. Do we have a bad one here and there? Yeah, but, you know.
And what I like is that with all the issues we've had related to rental properties that, I mean, this is a program that in a sense is policing landlords and holding them to a higher standard, which certainly helps our cities, helps our neighborhoods, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's what they've put into place, and we've done that and exercised those rules and regulations for, I don't know, I've been, I've been, I've been around here a long time, but I've been a housing director for 25 years, and that rule's never, it's never changed. That's what we have to do, what we're supposed to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great, I have only one more thing.
Cash, baby.
Every year, every year, since we are exempt from taxes, but I did say that the city does need, and the locations of the three public housing units are in the city limits, and there's a provision in the HUD regulations, it's called pilot payment, which is payment in lieu of taxes. So, what we do, and then the worksheets in here as well, but it's based on gross rents and utilities and things like that, and then when the formula comes down, then it's, so this year it's like $7. No, I can't, I can't help myself. This year the pilot payment for the city is, and it shows with the, hopefully the utilities aren't as high, and then the rent, it goes up, but this year it's $62,006.94. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's all I have, and if you have any other questions, I believe. Are we good?
And thanks to your board for showing up to see me.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Get a pirate's skin watch.
Pardon?
You have a pirate's skin to watch.
I do. Yeah, but reluctantly because I'm still a man. Thank you.
Triple the minutes of the regular session of April 5, 2018.
Make a motion to approve that.
If there are no objections, motion carries. Petitions, communications, and public hearings, I don't believe we have any this evening. City managers reporting update.
Just under general updates, the spring cleanup, as of Wednesday, April 18th, the Public Works Department has collected 135.49 tons and has made 128 trips to landfill using various Public Works trucks, with a landfill tipping fee costing $5,151.66. This particular cleanup is 36 percent less than in tons for the first eight days in comparison to the most recent October of '17 fall cleanup. The cleanup does conclude on Friday, April 27th. Road slippage, the city is currently in the process of advertising a request for proposals from engineering firms to provide engineering services to assist with addressing the road slips throughout the city. All proposals from interested firms are due by Monday, April 30th. Administration will interview interested firms and then negotiate a contract for council to consider at its regular meeting on Thursday, May 17th. DOH, the Northview Overpass, the field review meeting was conducted onsite on Tuesday, April 10th. Assistant City Manager Anthony Bellotti attended that meeting, and a public meeting will be scheduled this summer for public comment. Street issues, the city does continue to communicate with the DOH regarding conditions of the state-owned and maintained roadways within the city, and the DOH crews have been out this past week working on these streets, and as of today, they pretty much made it all the way through Main Street, completing a lot of the pothole repairs on Main. City streets, Public Works Department has begun using hot mix asphalt now that the plans have opened for operation. The city crews have been in the neighborhoods making the appropriate road repairs along with the sweeper operation and spring cleanup. So, today, as they go through the spring cleanup, the sweepers have been following on the same routes, so we're pretty much getting the whole city and all the city streets cleaned up as well at the same time. All utility companies that include the Waterborne, Dominion, and Frontier will be contacted to inform them to return to all utility cuts made over the winter and replace and repair the concrete, or replace and repair with concrete and asphalt so they can get the hot mix out, the cold mix out of there and put the correct filling back in. Public Works crews are in the process of cleaning approximately 15 streets that were affected by the recent floodwaters, and all those have been reopened as of the day after, but they're going back to cleaning some areas that were affected. Economic development, with Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center, the window insulation in the ballroom has been completed, the HVAC insulation in the ballroom has also been completed, installation of wall tiles in the first and second floor restrooms, approximately 99 percent completed, installation of the wall assembly around the ADA ramp in the lobby is also approximately 98 percent complete, and the framing in the upper balcony box seats is approximately 80 percent complete. TIFF funds, the administration is proposing to replace 577 linear feet of sidewalk and curb on West Pike Street, North Sixth Street, and Hughes Avenue. In addition, there will be installation of conduit and pool boxes installed for future new streetlights, and the administration does recommend council approve the expenditure for $123,668 from TIFF funds and not to exceed $125,000. And also, one ribbon cutting coming up next week, Taqueria Lulu, the New Mexican Restaurant, will be Tuesday, April 24th at 11:00 a.m., located at 1404 West Virginia Avenue. Boards and commissions, Planning and Zoning Commission, I am reappointing Patrick Schaefer to the P&amp;Z Commission. This is, appointment is on council's agenda for confirmation, it's under new business. Police, testing for the physical ability test was held Saturday, April 14th. A total of 11 appeared to participate and seven passed. The written test will be scheduled for Wednesday, May 2nd, and then we want to have another physical ability test on Saturday, May 5th. So, anybody attends the written test and then attend the physical ability test if they so. they so pass on the, on the 2nd. Tasers training, thirty-seven officers were certified for the use of tasers throughout the week, and thirty officers will be issued those tasers. This would not have been made possible without council approving the budget, to where we were able to purchase twenty-two more tasers. So again, appreciate council approving these funds, the chief and the other trainer himself, and also very appreciative of that, and explaining that to the officers as they went through the training. FOIA, we did receive one request since the last meeting from Lisa Kovach on Monday, April 16th, requesting copies of building permits, citations, and fines, and any documents in regard to the construction of 105 Brown Street, and we, we'll be responding to Lisa Kovach's request tomorrow, Friday, April 20th, and the information will be provided to her on Friday, May 4th. Complete, City Manager.
Thank you.
Mark, one quick question, which is good to see with the streets, especially on Main Street, as the city having better communication or agreement with the state recently, because it is the state roads and.
I wouldn't say it's better, I think we've had very good communication with District Four, the DOH, we do have several contacts out there, we try to keep communication with, making them aware of concerns we may have. We offer typically as well, when they're coming out to do this type of work, that, you know, we'll offer one or two of our employees as well as a roller, if need be, to go out there. But I, I believe from what our communication is with the DOH, they have, when you get the Quality Hill, the amount of potholes from there on the golf plans was exceptional, with how many are there. So I think they have a greater plan to come back to maybe soft cut out those areas and do some greater repairs and just.
That's what I was going to ask, because that's probably temporary fix, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's hot asphalt mix, which will stay in, but I think to make it better, they will need to address those larger areas that have been rippled and, uh, artifact.
No unfinished business, new business, consideration of First Treaty of Inordinance of the City of Clarksville amending Article thirteen fifteen point oh one, Part thirteen of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Clarksville, by amending the zoning map, rezoning all that certain order parcel of land containing zero point one-six acre situated on South Twenty-third Street in the City of Clarksville Coal District, Harrison County, West Virginia, designated as parcel two sixteen on tax map eight, from its current status as a residential two district to a business one district.
So moved to second discussion. I, I just want a close call, I don't know which way I'm going to vote on second reading. I see we have a divided P and Z board, I also heard some concerns tonight, I'd like to hear them fleshed out more. I'm going to vote yes tonight, because in order to get to the comments on second reading, it has to get past first reading, and like I said, I'm just undecided at this point.
Any further discussion?
I think also we'll have some of the package that Martin showed me, showed more clarification about the parcel.
Yeah, so what, so council segment in the work session was, what we provide is actually the plaque of showing what the P and Z voted upon, showing what the current zones are now in that area, and showing the situation where that property is, so you have a better idea.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not saying I'm opposed or in support, but I'm just saying I'm undecided.
There'll be additional information?
Yes.
Yeah, I had the same concern.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the same point I wanted to make, is to make sure that we see that information, we have a little more detail.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Goodwin Ford, that Martin indicated that they'll provide that for us before the next public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Call for question.
Is that it? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration for sidewalk infrastructure improvements along North Sixth Street from West Pike Street to Hughes Avenue, and along West Pike Street from North Sixth Street to four forty West Pike Street, and Hughes Avenue from North Sixth Street to East Side to four forty-four West Pike Street, utilizing TIP funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Still move, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Consideration of confirmation of the city manager's reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Patrick Schaefer.
Move that we approve the recommendation, the city manager, to reappoint Pat Schaefer?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council comments? Real quick, I just want to give everybody a reminder that the Mayor's Youth Council Senior Shadow Day is this coming Monday. We're having a luncheon at twelve-thirty at Menards, so if anybody can attend, so I just wanted to call that to your attention. Does anybody have anything significant that they want to talk about?
Just a reminder that a week from tonight is that final grand performances event, and if you would like tickets to get ahold of Dolores Yoke.
Did you?
She was hopeful that we'd have some.
Yeah, I requested some, so I guess the Nets keeping track of it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, because this is their big, the Cultural Foundation's big performance series that next season will be in our brand-new theater.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I had is that early voting begins next Wednesday, so I encourage everybody to go out and exercise your right to vote.
I just had a quick thing, I just wanted everyone to have Barbara Bush, we lost here a couple days ago, great dignified lady, and to have our Bush family in our prayers, she's a great first lady, and also, I don't think we had a meeting since the tragedy of the hockey team, the Humboldt College hockey team, and the devastation of like sixteen individuals, so my hearts go out to the prayers, good to the families.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, pursuant to Chapter Six, Article nine A, Section Four of the West Virginia Code, I move the council adjourned into executive session to discuss matters involving the purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction, planning, the investment of public funds, or other matters involving completion, competition which, if made public, might adversely affect the financial or other interests of the city, and to discuss legal matters, and that the following persons be present, mayor and members of city council, city manager, assistant city manager.
If we could add the legal counsel as well, that represents an N A case.
Okay. All right. We'll go into.
Thanks.